Hey, Kronks. Welcome to the Canton Chronicle Select Board Watch Party. I got, I got some news. Before we tune into tonight's select board meeting, I want to take a moment and appreciate an email that came across, that I came across today. I'm gonna take my time to let some people get in here. We got, we got two things that I want to get, you know, get out before the meeting starts. So, according to Town Administrator Charlie Dooley, retired police chief Helena Rafferty absolutely does not have an office and does not do any work for the Canton Police Department. And she only pops in once in a while to use the bathroom. So, I'm thrilled that Helena has access to the facilities. I truly am, okay? But there's a couple of things that go with this, all right? Some of us remember the little situation last year when peaceful residents held weekly standouts outside the police station. And what did Helena do? She locked the bathrooms so that those very taxpayers that she served couldn't use it. That bathroom was locked down tighter than the phone geofence location data at 34 Fairview. So, when taxpayers quietly exercised their First Amendment rights, the bathrooms magically became off limits. But now, in her retirement, Helena can waltz right in, walk past every restriction she imposed to the public, and straight to that same restroom she once weaponized as a barricade against criticism. And, speaking of bathroom access, while Helena enjoys her porcelain privileges at the police station, Jen McCabe is still stuck using Lang's bathroom. So, it's funny how the access works in this town. If you're a resident, lock doors. If you're a protester, close signs, mirrored glass. If you're a retired command staff under scrutiny, step right in, the porcelain throne awaits you. So, you know, that's, that's, that's the first thing. So, when they lecture us about transparency, professionalism, and accountability, let's remember that email that Helena's, you know, she's doing a detail on Ball of the Street. I see, I saw it two days in a row on Ball of the Street. You mean to tell me when she's five feet from the DPW, she's gonna drive down to the police station, use that bathroom because the DPW bathroom's not good enough for her? I don't know, just say. Does she got a key card or does she have to ring the bell? Does she have to go through the front door and ask? I don't know. But their answer was, they're on, it's written now, she gets to use the bathroom. So, secondly, you guys are gonna love this. A resident asked, who were the three officers seen at 34 Fairview the night CERT was there? Who sent them? And the town sent a response. They sent a shift schedule and the shift placements. I'm gonna show you guys, all right? This is, this is what they sent. So, they said, oh, that's the, that's the placements, hold on. They, they sent a shift schedule. All right? We'll get into that because I went through it. But their response was, this is their response to that question. Attached, please find the documents we have to match your requests below. One is a printout of the schedule for January 29th. The other one is an assignment printout of what sectors the officers were assigned to for the shift. We do not have any other responsive records in our possession, custody, or control pertaining to your request. The request was, who were the three officers? Who were the three officers? And who sent them? And they have no records of who the three officers were and who sent them. Okay? Let that sink in. Let me close this. Pull that off. So, they don't know, they don't know who the three Canton officers were that helped the state police, all right? But we're, we're gonna get into this a little bit more. That's their whole response. That was their whole response. They, they told the requester they have nothing else, which either means some officers magically teleported down to Fairview with no radio call, no supervisor approval, no GPS, and no documentation, and it was off the books, which would be insane. The other option is, the records exist, but they don't want to hand them over, which would be very predictable in our case. And they're not obligated to create a list. Nobody asked for a list. The question was, who was there? Where are the records? Who sent them? Zero documentation of any officers entering a crime scene during an active search. It was an active search by the Mass. State Police, and they have zero documentation of any office, Canton officers being there. That's the problem. The problem's not the request, the problem is the department, all right? If the MSP CERT team was searching for evidence, then that means it was an official evidence sweep and involved, obviously, Canton was there, now it's multiple agencies. The accountability should have been required for officer safety and chain of custody, and they don't have it. They had none of this. But we keep asking questions. So, let's pull these up, and in the meantime, actually, at the same time, I need to, I need to pull up the, I wanna pull up the select board so I don't, so I'm not late for Brenda's. So, hold on one minute while I look up the, I gotta get that ready, because I don't want to miss it. Nobody wants to miss it, right? One second as I pull up the Canton Government Station, Station livestream. All right. Okay. All right. Just wanna make sure I have, yep. And I want to share this, also share audio. Pull it up just for a minute. Let me see if, yep, okay. I just, I'm just gonna leave this here while we, you know, not, let me see if I can get this up to, yeah, I'll leave that definite, right? No, no, no snow here either. No snow in West Roxbury, Canton, Attleboro, anywhere. All right, so, so they sent us the, the location of where everyone was for their shifts, right? Right here, Eli Anderson had the, he was in car 682, and he was posted to SGT2, wherever that is. Ben Berkowitz was Northwest Sector, car 692. Michael Chin was roving. Gallagher was a lieutenant. Sean Klimas was in the West Section. Teddy Lehan was the other sergeant. Michael McDonald had it off. Mulaney was in the Northeast Section, and Theodore was on the desk, all right? So, that's who was out for those hours when somebody was down at 34 Fairview. Now, if you take that, and the reason why I knew Michael McDonald is out, because A, it's blank, and then B, if you go to their shift page, right? I have to make it enlarged. If you look for the, here's eight to four, right? And then there's, there's the eight to four sergeant, there's the 12 to eight patrol officers. This is so, Saturday, January 29th. Here's the schedule, all right? One of the things that point that, that I see is, remember, on the 29th, the 28th into the 29th, we know Sean Good was on the desk. But it also says here, under Employees Off, on the right side where it says Employees Off, Eli Anderson was on vacation on the 29th, right? From 4:00 PM to the 30th, 12:00 AM, midnight, all right? Sean Good on the 29th, 12:00 AM, but we know he came in, he's, he's, he's on, he was on the desk. But he also has a personal day from 12:00 AM to 8:00 AM, right? But we know he was on the desk during those times. And if you look further down, he also filled out overtime from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM, six hours, writing the report for the O'Keefe case. So, he was on the desk, he had a personal day, and he got overtime. Could be a Scrivener's error, I don't know. But we know he got overtime, we know he was there till 2:00 in the afternoon, right? Brendan Healy had comp time, that he took off from 4:00 PM on the 29th to midnight on the 30th. Michael McDonald, because it was blank, we saw he wasn't on that day, he took comp time. Hero, vacation. Cheryl, comp time, wasn't there from eight, she didn't come in on the 29th from 8:00 to 4:00. And Silveisi was on vacation, 8:00 on the 29th, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, right? Now, if you look further down at the bottom, Helena Rafferty, she got straight time earned, 8:30 AM to 5:30 PM. She put in nine hours of straight time. She was at the station or somewhere else, but she was on duty on that day. 8:00 AM, and Sarah put in for an hour, he stayed, he stayed late an hour that morning because, you know, and Anthony Pascarelli stayed an extra hour, 8:00 AM to 9:00 because he got off, right? So, Helena Rafferty, 8:30 to 5:30, nine hours at the station. 5:30, do you think she left the station and went down to Fairview? Did she go down to Fairview off the clock? Is she one of the people down at Fairview? I don't know. Don't know. So, Dad's a Scrivener. Okay, go ahead. I'd love to see where Good put in the request for that specific personal day. Absolutely, right? So, he's already on the desk from the night before, and he's got a personal day that he's working, and then he gets the overtime for writing the report. Now, we're gonna have to go see if he, did he write the report that day? Was it dated for that day? Because he says he was writing the report that day. Did he, that's something we're gonna have to look into. This just came across, this just came to me just within the last hour or two. So, we're gonna have to see about, you know, when he, when he wrote, when he dated his report. The other thing you notice, if, if you look, staffing level, eight to four that day. They had two lieutenants on, Chuckie Ray, Paul Gallagher, because, because remember, they called Paul Gallagher in that day, right? They already had, and if you look in the parentheses next to the staffing levels, they have two, they only need one, but they had two. Like over here, Detective Sergeant, staffing level, one of one. Lang, 8:00 AM, right? To eight, to 8:00 AM, 24 hours. And then Michael Lang, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Mobile Ops, they didn't have anyone on, on Mobile Ops. On-call detective, 12 to 12, Kevin Albert. That day, Kevin Albert was the on-call detective, but it went to Lang, and Lang is the one that went out that day. They had no lieutenants, which, from what I understand, happens a lot. It just, they, they don't, they didn't need a lieutenant on duty. What, the thing that sticks out to me really is, is the, the fact that Sean Good was on the desk, Sean Good got a personal day, and Sean Good put in for his overtime for staying behind to write his report, all of the same, you know, triple dipping. So, yeah, I'm Peter Griffin. Peter Griffin, that's me. There you go. So, we're, we're gonna get ready, three minutes, two minutes to the, to the select board, where we will get the select board up so we don't miss it. Hold on, we, I gotta put this on the big screen. And let me go here and, this is the old, this'll cut in when, this'll cut in when they go live, right at, so it was at 7:00, it's gonna cut in. So, let me make sure that we have, we got two minutes here. This for a minute. This one. All right, we got the right screen up, and we are going to be ready for the, for the select board. So, I hope everybody is having a good night, and yeah, I can't wait to dive into that, those requests a little more. I do know that the, the request has been modified, and we will see what their answer to the modified request is. Yeah. Oh, is that what, he wanted to go to the Blizzard Party? So, he went in, he went in at 11:45, and then, and then put in for a personal day so he could, so he could go. But he's, here's the thing, that's the only, if that's a mistake, that it, that it says, it says 129 to 129 instead of 129 to 130, this is the only one that they made a mistake on. Dever is there to mid-afternoon, and it shows you up, we'll bring it up. I don't want to bring it up right away because, because any second now, the select board is going to be starting, and we don't want to miss it.
Have an action plan.
Now, it's not planning for it. So, any second, it should be clicking over to the select board.
Any other questions or comments?
And I'm gonna put it, I'm gonna make it.
We got it. We're all set. Okay, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Canton Select Board Meeting of December 2nd, 2025, at Memorial Hall, 801 Washington Street, Canton, Mass. We're in the solid meeting room. Just to let everybody know, this evening's meeting is being recorded by Canton Community Television. This evening, Clerk Christopher Albert is homesick, he's not feeling good, as is our Town Administrator Charles Charlie Dooley, also today, and we are in the presence of Jen Chameleon, our Assistant Administrator, so we are in good hands. With that said, I'm gonna read a public comment, statement, and then we'll start public comment. Public comment of the meeting is an opportunity to listen to residents' feedback and concerns. However, it is not meant to be a question-and-answer format. There'll be no response to any public comment when presented. The public comment portion of the meeting is limited to 15 minutes total and up to three minutes per speaker. Those that wish to speak should stand at the microphone and wait to be recognized by the chair. Please state your name and the town you live in. Your address is not required. I would ask all members of the audience to be respectful of each speaker as well as each other. Anyone that does not wish to speak or is unable to do to the, due to the time limit, may submit their comments in writing for the board's review and consideration. That being said, we will start public meeting at 7:01.
Here we go.
Brenda Sweeney, Canton. During testimony, Gallagher agreed with Jackson that CPD officers were spitballing, that it's the investigator's job to try and figure out what happened. You don't take witnesses' words for things. You corroborate, ask more questions, actually investigate. Nothing, nobody's ruled out. You follow where the evidence leads you. Gallagher also agreed that he didn't seek to separate the occupants of 34 Fairview or interview Brian Albert. Jackson agrees Gallagher shouldn't have interviewed Higgins because they're personal friends, but challenges him for not having someone else do it. Gallagher's retort, maybe you didn't understand. I didn't know Higgins was in the house at the time. Jackson comes back with, because you didn't ask anybody else. Might have been a good idea to ask Mr. Albert, who was here last night just before John O'Keefe was found dead on your lawn. Gallagher informed him, that was already done by Detective Sergeant Lang, and it was documented in his report. Jackson reacts, then how did you two not know Brian Higgins was there? Gallagher explained, I discovered Brian Higgins was there when I read Sergeant Lang's report. Jackson persisted, but you were standing in the house with Sergeant Lang. You just told these jurors he knew about Brian Higgins and everybody else that was there. Gallagher's justification, he had obtained the names, he hadn't written his report yet. Incredulous, Jackson asks, and he hadn't told his boss? Gallagher, I don't recall. Jackson counters, even though you two went there together to interview yet another witness. Gallagher answers, that's correct. So, he's telling us he's the on-scene supervisor tasked with making decisions that steer the investigation. Claims he didn't know Higgins was there that night because his subordinates write the reports, and he waits to make critical decisions until after he reads them. Help that make sense for us, Gallagher. We're spitballing here, but were you lazy, incompetent, or could it be that delay gave you the plausible deniability you needed to stay off the Brady List? Proctor takes over, problem solved, hence the delay. Why is it you didn't need to read those reports to decide there was no probable cause to search the house that morning? That shines a whole new light on your excuse for going to the station for your winter gear before heading to the crime scene. Did you get orders to make sure things went according to plan? Are you and Proctor two P's in a pod they put on a joint task force to steer the investigation that day? The story didn't hold water then, it's still leaking like a sieve today. We'll be back. Three words to think about while you're counting sheep, three letters to think about while you're counting sheep, Lieutenant Gallagher, FBI.
Thank you.
Jack Conney, Canton. As a taxpayer in Canton, I am disgusted about the way some of the disgraced Canton police offices that were involved in the Karen Reed and John O'Keefe investigation are rewarded with paid details around the town. It's a slap in the face to everyone in Canton that they are allowed to get paid after their incompetence. They were incompetent at bumbling in their actions or lack of actions during that case. One of them was such a coward that he didn't even come out of the house that was directly across the street from where an honest cop lay dying on the front lawn at 34 Fairview. It's wrong, and whoever allows this to happen needs to realize that they are rewarding these deplorable officers, and we, the citizens, are not happy.
Good evening. Peter Murphy, Marshfield. I'm going to piecemeal some information I have here. I would like to explain to everybody that this is basically a narrative, an excerpt that I created back on March 25th of '24 and sent it out as a letter to the editor. What I would like to say is that this was drafted almost two years ago. Anything I say is an opinion of mine, at least, and may have some facts. In two years, I will say little or nothing has changed since I drafted this letter. And I would also like to say, I speak to you, the select board, and I speak to the towns' people. In my opinion, I wish to begin again by extending my deepest condolences to all the many fine citizens of Canton now living in fear, the lack of transparency, distrust, and even disbelief. I speak to you as a former resident of Canton, aka a townie, town club member, softball team member, and a police officer sergeant for almost three decades in the town of Canton. To reiterate, and I know this may be repetitive, but I feel there's some people in this town, and perhaps on the board, who are not good listeners, and I think it's time that everybody paid attention. So, I want to paraphrase from a Town of Canton, Massachusetts document appearing online under what I would say general areas of responsibility of the select board, and it says, which needs to be immediately brought to your attention in advance of the next election. The select board is comprised of chief elected and executive officers of the town of Canton responsible for the oversight and deliverance of all general municipal services, including public safety. In addition, appointment of the department heads of the various general agencies falls within the scope of their responsibility, your responsibility. I submit, the audit showed that there was a tremendous failure in the responsibilities of, of the Canton Police Department. It would also be my comment, as I have commented before, that within days of the homicide of Officer John O'Keefe, a thorough and complete investigation should have been conducted by the select board, the police commissioners. The Canton Police Command Staff failed to follow routine, established and mandated crime scene SOPs guided by criminal case law of search and seizure, as well as departmental policies and procedures, in my opinion, warranted many officers be put on paid administrative leave immediately. Nothing was done to them. No, no reprimands, no nothing. As reported in court at about the time of May 25th, the FBI concluded that Officer O'Keefe was not hit by a motor vehicle. So, people in town, you're damn right to have fear and warrant, and it is justified. As it is apparent that because of the failure of the select board to oversee the Canton Police Department, their responsibility, the real perpetrators are out and about. Vote for Need to Change Transparency, Truth, and Healing to heal the town of Canton and the police department in the next town election. Furthermore, do the right thing in coming weeks and appoint a chief with good credentials, a solid background, and no, and I repeat, no ties to the Town of Canton or Norfolk County. And thank you.
Let's see, no further speakers, we'll end public comment and go right to the agenda. First thing on the agenda is Commissioner Stady, Commissioner, for the holiday donation drive for the veterans, please.
Well, let us play for the veterans.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you again. Good habit, maybe? I don't know. Won't see me for a while, next little next year. But I apologize, our Director of RCP had a personal issue, so she will not be with us tonight. So, I'll be speaking on behalf of the RCP program. Our RCP program is one of the many programs that we run in Norfolk County. It was in the past funded by the federal government with the cuts that were made this past year. The commissioners decided to pick up all of it and to fund it. They have a variety of jobs that they do mostly for our senior population in Norfolk County, mostly actually for the smaller towns that don't perhaps have their own viability, but they do assist in towns in their efforts in terms of food collection, for food pantries, and most notably, when speaking about tonight, they have a great program we're very proud of called the Ride for Vets. In the Ride for Vets programs, any vet who lives in Norfolk County who's in need of a ride or transportation for a doctor or a hospital can call our office, and we make arrangements for them to go. It's a great program, very proud of that. It's all Lucille, it's all them, not me, but they do a great job, and of course, we support it. So, in, in, in kind of tandem with that, what we're here tonight is we're having a Veterans Holiday Drive. We'd ask for you to allow us to put a container here, and perhaps for other places that Mr. Dooley and I have talked about. We're gonna have them across the county, and our effort is to collect small goods and give the vets in the hospitals at like Jamaica Plain and Brockton and different VA facilities that we visit, we bring them small tokens at Christmas as a gift to kind of cheer them up a little bit. Some typical items, this is what Lucille told me, and, you know, you could let your imagination go wild, but you have toothbrush, toothpaste, deodorant, shaving cream, body washers. toothbrush, toothpaste, deodorant, shaving cream, body washes, uh, reading glasses. Uh, she had to have sweatsuits, not sure about that one. I don't know what this is, back scratcher. I, I wish she was here for that, but I guess something helped me scratch her back, okay? Playing cards, that was my idea. Handheld mirror, things of that sort. Anything you think would be appropriate, obviously we would, we greatly appreciate it. And if the press can give us a little publicity to get the word out there, that would be great too.
So you're planning on putting totes or something out?
We're gonna put these containers, we've already got them up.
Okay.
Different place, it was, uh, I, I spoke to Charlie this afternoon. Would you have permission, I guess? We'll be in the foyer at the town hall here.
Okay.
And maybe at the library, but we'll start off the town hall. And it'll just say help a vet, you know, RCP. And we're gonna collect it, I imagine, for a couple of weeks. And then maybe a few days before Christmas Eve, Eve, we'll go around and wind it up. And then Lucille and, uh, I'll get the duty, probably be a great duty to go with her. And we'll deliver those things and, uh, bring some cheer to our veterans.
Excellent, excellent idea.
Just to do a good thing.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Uh, just one. What does RVP stand for?
You had to ask me. Well, Lucille would tell you that. When I started, they called, I thought it had to do with like responding to formal invitations and it's a great, I think, I think, let me try it. Good question. I think it stands for Retired Senior Volunteer Program. Is he, not bad.
He did it.
Retired Senior Volunteer Program, RVP. And it is, it's made up, but mostly, um, Lucille Cassis is our director. She's new, uh, she lives in Braintree, but she's doing a great job. Uh, volunteers, senior volunteers, uh, help out and they do different things. They don't just do this, for example, we have, uh, RCP volunteers help out in the schools. Unless you're at the elementary level, they sometimes will give with the, uh, contract, the teachers will let them. They'll read to the kids, read stories, tell stories, help them out, helping hands, like a teacher's aide. Um, as I said, we help out in food pantries. Uh, the veterans program is a big program. A lot of things, it's a great thing we do. A thank you award luncheon that we give to them that we, we feature like once in the summertime. And, um, it's made up like, like 300 volunteers. If anybody wants to join, again, contact myself at the office or Lucille Cassis. And certainly if there's any veteran who wants to contribute by driving, we do give reimbursement for mileage. We do. And a lot of times it's, uh, we've heard in talking to the veterans that drive, it's almost therapeutic for them. They get to bond with a veteran and talk about shared experiences. And it's kind of like, uh, you know, kind of a, a good thing as well for them. You know, you give, you get what you give, right? So it's a good program.
Excellent.
Well, we have containers out there and hopefully we'll fill them right up.
Fantastic. Good luck with the program.
Okay.
We don't need a vote on that at all, do we? No, I don't think so. All right. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Appreciate it and good luck.
Thank you. Let me speak about the county. Just one more program we're doing, we're trying. And, uh, I'll see you all soon. Okay?
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Next we have, uh, municipal capital request review. And first up is the board of health.
I think we've, uh, we've got through what we normally all can read.
Um, so this is my first time doing capital request, so, um, bear with me.
On the chat, do you want to?
The board of health is requesting, um, we have two capital requests. The first one is a 2026 Chevy Equinox, um, electronic vehicle. Um, our current vehicle is a 2013 Ford Focus. It's broken down four times this year. Um, it's beyond its usable life. Um, and while a gas.
Okay. There you go. Uh, I do know that one of the, uh, attendees of the Rabbit House, you guys know what we're talking about, right? Um, is, uh, is also in attendance at the, uh, select board meeting tonight. Um, yeah. So it, it, there are, um, I guess there's, there's a couple of things going on there tonight. I, I guess there might be some, uh, pickleball, I don't know what's going on tonight, but, um, yeah, let's, uh, let's, let's look back at this, um. I want to go back to this because, um, I haven't been able to go through it completely yet, like I said, um. The Sean Good thing was the first thing that stuck out to me. Um, there was the 12, there's the, uh, I need my glasses. Here we go. Peter Griffin needs his glasses. So the eight to four is what we were really looking at, not the 12, not the 12 to eight, 12 to eight is midnight to eight, that's the morning. It's the eight to four. I wish we had more because, um, we want to know who was on duty after four because we want to know who went down there at 5:30, 6 o'clock. That's what the question said. So the question, they gave us something that had nothing to do with what the question, with what the request was. And they think they're gonna be okay with that. That's the problem. They give us till four o'clock. They don't give us. The question, like I said, the question was who were the three officers that went down there when the cert team was there? We know the cert team was there from say anytime 5:30 to 6:15. Right? Not eight to four. But it did tell us Helena Rafferty was there till 5:30 PM because she put in for nine hours, which she go after 5:30? Did she leave the station and go down? Right? We do know that Sean Good was on the desk. Then he put in for a, uh, then he put in for a personal day on the 29th from midnight on the 29th, 12 AM to 8 AM when he was already on the desk. And then he wrote that report. So these are a couple of questions that I'm gonna have to look into is what was the date on the report that he wrote? Did he date it on the 29th? Because that's when he said he did the report. So yeah, there you go. It's the closest you're gonna get. Um, yeah, so we're gonna now wait another 10 days minus the weekends for them to get back to the re, the, the request that was asked for in the first place. Who were the three officers? Who sent them? You know? Well, I'm from Canton, I might live in Hutterboro, or although there is, there is, there is a, um, a place right near us that is the, uh, the bar of Family Guy. It's called the Pawtucket Patriot. You go in there, it's the Family Guy bar. Um, they even have Family Guy stuff in there. Uh, but so, um, yeah, so that was our pop-up, uh, select board view party. And I just want to let you guys know, like, uh, don't, don't forget, we, uh, we have moved the show because, uh, we, we have our shoresy game on Sunday. And, um, who knows, there might be another pop-up soon. DJ, how's it going? Yeah, the Patriot is great. DJ's been there. Um, yeah. Um, so keep on the lookout for, uh, some other pop-up lives that might be coming. All right, guys? And I'm gonna keep looking into these, uh, foyer requests. Can you also foyer the MSP assignments? I contend that Proctor was not slated on duty until after 8 AM on the 29th. Uh, yeah, we probably could. Yeah. Um, Chris Albert, and that's, oh, that's one other thing. I am going to look into, so we know now, you know, Chris is ending his three-year, uh, stint on the select board. I'm gonna go back through and get the, the correct attendance record for Chris over the last three years. And then we're gonna compile, um, his attendance, how much that cost in iced coffee, how much that cost in gas mileage from Maple Street to the, um, town hall. Uh, and, and come up with how much, uh, he cost us for the last three years. So that's gonna be my next project is, is going through his attendance record, his iced coffee consumption, his, uh, gas mileage. And, uh, hopefully we'll have that for, for you guys by the next show. All right? So we will see you guys soon. All right? Peace out.